Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Kimmy Larson, I'm going to send you a message. Are you going to share your screen?
I was lining up to do that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, please, if you could. Thank you very much.
And have we heard from any trustees that they're not going to be able to make it this evening?
I have not. So it looks like at the moment, you're only missing...
I don't...
Tanya and Alan.
Tanya and Alan. And we need to have at least six.
Yep.
So, I mean, we've got a few minutes still, so it's not a problem yet, but...
Jennifer, I want to confirm you can hear me. I'm hoping you can. Jennifer, can you hear us? I'm testing this.
Yes, I can. I think so. Thank you.
And then Mayor Larson, I'm going to send a message to trustee Apt and trustee Corvallin.
That sounds great. Thanks. 7:01, but we're going to wait a few more minutes here to give a chance for the last two trustees to dial in.
Trustee Apt says he was looking for the link, and so I'm just going to send it right to him. And I have not heard from trustee Corvallin.
Okay, thanks. I remember...
She didn't say she wanted to camp. Yeah.
Right.
Actually, it's like you maybe have trustee Corvallin's here.
I see. I actually...
Who just called in?
This is John Dyatt from the Kind Castle.
We're just waiting for another trustee member who's trying to get on.
Okay. Very good. How are you doing today?
We are. Good. How about you?
Oh, very good. Very good. Thanks. Thought I'd chime in for just a moment.
Yeah, so when the mayor calls for a public comment, I know you just sent an email to the board, but you can also read, you have three minutes, portions or all of that to them. This is Miranda, by the way.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I know you're horny.
Yeah, this is Mayor Larson. We'll have, because this is an action item, we'll of course have a public comment as usual. Because I know, John, you are, you're interested in speaking, and I know Sue Church is on here and wants to speak as well. And anyone else who is calling in is welcome too. But we'll just, we're giving a couple more minutes here for Alan to navigate the WebEx link.
Okay. Sure.
And John, I don't know if you're on a cellphone or internet connection, so far you've been really choppy and we're getting like every other word from you. So I don't know if there's a better signal location you go to or something, just as a heads up.
No, thanks for the feedback on that. Is that any better? I was actually using some earbuds that are brand new.
Ah, that is a little bit better, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
And we're all... Yeah, we're all still learning with this new virtual meeting thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I see Alan is on, and I think we have a full attendance from the Board of Trustees. So at 7:06 PM on Tuesday, August 11th, we will call to order this Board of Trustees emergency meeting. Miranda, which...
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Here.
I don't, trustee Apt, are you there?
Uh, hang on.
Oh, we can hear you. Trustee Koom Zizmail.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer. Trustee Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
All right, thank you all for making time for us this evening, and also for everyone from the public who has come to call in this evening and join us. We have just the one item on the agenda tonight that came out of the meeting last week where we discussed the feedback we've been getting from members of our constituents within the public about reinstituting the moratorium, the temporary moratorium on the issuance of marijuana licenses. So I think we will do, have this introduced by our town attorney, who drafted the ordinance number 810 that we're looking at tonight. And we'll then take quick comments from the Board of Trustees on this subject, and then open it up to public comment before bringing it back to the board. So Jennifer, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor Larson. Thank you, and good evening, trustees. The matter before you tonight is ordinance 810. And what that ordinance would do, if you pass it, it would be, it would put a temporary stop on the issue of issuance of any marijuana licenses. It would also suspend any processing of applications for licenses and stop the town from accepting any new licenses. As stated in the information that's in the packet in the AIM, the town has the authority under the Constitution to adopt regulations related to issuance of licenses. And those regulations can't be related to time, place, and manner restrictions for operating marijuana businesses. And the town may also adopt regulations limiting the number of marijuana establishments in town. Now, that is different from liquor laws, but that is authority that's given to municipalities by the voters when they passed, when they legalized marijuana. In 2011, 2013, the town adopted regulations for issuance of medical business marijuana licenses. And then 2013 was the retail marijuana business licenses. And since that time, there have been quite a few changes to the state marijuana laws. Most recently, in 2019, the Colorado General Assembly adopted a pretty significant bill which reorganized the marijuana codes in state statutes, merged a couple of statutes. And based on that new legislation that was effective in January of 2020, some of the provisions in the town's retail marijuana and medical marijuana regulations are outdated and inconsistent with Colorado law. One other thing to mention is that there are other jurisdictions who have placed fairly stringent time, place, and manner restrictions related to issuance of marijuana licenses. Other jurisdictions that have limited the number of licenses that would be available in their jurisdictions. I provided a few examples in the AIM. For example, Lafayette has limited it to three. Eagle has limited it to two retail marijuanas. And other municipalities have different limitations. So there are, there are things that, if there is a desire, there are things that the town can do related to limitation of business licenses, and also changes in the code which would limit the place of business, that type of thing. Before you tonight is an emergency ordinance. What the emergency ordinance means is that it would go into effect immediately. In order to pass an emergency ordinance, three-fourths of you need to approve it. That would be six out of seven of the members of the Board of Trustees that would need to approve it. So that's all I have for you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, as those who were on the board in the previous board, remember, we had the moratorium in place for a period of time. And, excuse me, and it was decided to revoke that moratorium. It was about a year ago. And since then, we've heard, I've heard from some constituents about wanting to reassess the number density, numerical number or density or numerical number of marijuana establishments in the town. And so I know the town has done a great deal of research on this for us last year. And I think, so we are, have a leg up on what we would attempt to do with this moratorium, or the research part of it at least. So I'm just interested in hearing from the rest of the board, and of course, the public, before we bring this back for discussion. So I'm just going to go down the list here and get, if there's any questions from the town board for the town attorney or town staff regarding this, before we hear from the public. Alan.
I guess, I guess I'd just like to hear from the public on this. I do have concerns about the number of establishments in town. And I guess I have to say, in particular, I'm concerned about the idea of having an establishment where people, you know, use a lot of marijuana. And I'm concerned about them getting behind the wheel of a car. Of course, there's a similar concern with alcohol. And people are allowed to do that. The thing about marijuana is, the strength of marijuana has gotten extremely high, extremely strong. And so I just wonder about this, the public safety end of it, as much as anything. But I'm open to hearing what other people have to say and the public. I was kind of surprised last time when we looked at this issue, we heard from almost no one in the public. You know, after we had people contact us who were concerned about it, when we had the public meetings, no one turned up. So we'll see what, what happens this time.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Koom Zizmail.
I agree that hearing from the public would be useful in this regard. And I also agree that it is depending how many establishments we're bringing into town. It not only affects us in direct relation to marijuana usage, but it is also kind of a high-cost industry that pays a lot of rent and drives up costs for everyone else around it, including businesses that we may need in this town that cannot afford to actually operate here. So I would, I would, I'm leaning towards the idea that this moratorium be put in place and that we do some real careful decision-making regarding how we're going to move forward in the future.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yeah, well, I'm hopping back into this. I had listened to you guys' recording when this discussion came up, and it seemed like consensus on the board was there's definitely a concern with the number of establishments we have. The idea being, you know, four or five is enough already. On one hand, I definitely hear that and have always agreed that we don't probably need more than two in a town the size of Netherlands. That said, I have a little bit of concerns about doing this without committing, as a board, all seven of us, to handling this within three months and going in and actually changing the code instead of just doing a moratorium. As Alan had mentioned, we did this last year with the discussion being that we were going to handle it. And six months passed, we hadn't discussed it, and we were knee-deep in so many other things. We removed the moratorium. And I believe we started this moratorium last year because of marijuana establishment was potentially moving in. We had a moratorium. After taking, lifting that moratorium a month later, we had another marijuana establishment move into that same building. So while I do hear the argument that marijuana establishments might drive up costs of other rents, I really question how much we can, as a board, micro-manage markets in this way when we had a newly renovated building sitting unused for six months during the moratorium, and then it only took a month of our moratorium being lifted for that retail space to be filled. So I'd like to hear the public's perspective on this, and then have some more kind of detailed discussion amongst the BOT of if we pass this moratorium, how do we plan to handle this? And I would like to see us pick a number tonight and really change this code. I would hate, I guess I'll say, I won't vote for this moratorium if it's just going to be, we're passing a six-months moratorium to give us six months to research. We did that last year, and it didn't really amount to any action, and just resulted in retail space sitting unused for six months. So while I would like to see other establishments move in, I do think we need to be aware of what is currently in our codes, what is a right-by-use in our codes. And if we're going to pass this moratorium tonight, we do so with the intention of going in and limiting the number of establishments from here on out. And this being the first step in a larger plan that we can at least have a not-a-for-on tonight. That's about it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Trustee Taylor.
As you may remember, I was not wholeheartedly in favor of this at our last meeting. But I will note that having read the documents proposed, the ordinance proposed, and having read several good arguments from various citizens and citizen groups, I am in favor of this right now. And I see because it does strike me that the ordinance, the code that we have in place isn't addressing some of the key issues that were brought up in those arguments. So I completely agree with Mayor Protem Baumhofer. We need to establish a schedule with some milestones and deadlines for developing code, modifications to the code, that will manage new eventualities that have arisen through the changes in the law and through our personal, our town experience with the marijuana distribution that is already there. I have one question for attorney, for our town attorney. Jennifer, the one thing that concerns me a little bit about this is it has the, it has the faint odor of an ex post facto law. And I'm assuming that you have looked this over and thought this through, and that you're confident we can demonstrate this is not violating any norms associated with that kind of ordinance.
It, it, it would not be, it would not create any issues. What you would be doing would be stopping processing. There's no guarantee that once rules are in place, the town has the authority to change those rules, and an application doesn't hold those rules in place.
That was my assumption, and I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Julian and Jennifer, for that clarification. Trustee Danforth.
Hi. Yeah, I, I think that I'm in favor of having the, the moratorium just because we're seeing, you know, quite a few marijuana establishments coming in and displacing small businesses in a small town that could provide a variety of services for the people that live in Netherlands. And obviously, these are, these are popular businesses that make a lot of money. And I'm afraid if we, if we don't look at this and look at the impacts of the number that we have in our town and the density, that by the time we realize the impacts, it'll be too late. So I really want us to take a look at this, especially at a time when we are reflecting on our envisioned 2020, and looking to see what kind of town Netherlands is going to become and the vision that we see moving forward. You know, I think this is a great time to, to take a look at that, take a look at our code, make sure everything's in line, and especially with the new updates at the state level that were passed in 2019. I was briefly reading those, but clearly want to understand a little bit more about what these changes are, how do we opt in, opt out, or, you know, how does Netherlands deal with these, these new marijuana establishments? So I'm all in favor to, to move forward with this moratorium as long as we, as a board, take this seriously and take this time to have discussions and research this thoroughly, talk to Boulder County Public Health, which sent us some good information, and take our time to reach out to other cities and other professionals, I think, in, in public health as well as in the industry, and take the time to understand this more. So that, those are my comments on this.
Thank you, Lindsay. And trustee Corvallin.
Um, I feel like we have five. I don't see why we'd want any more in a town our size. I mean, I don't want Netherlands to be a tourist destination for people to come and shop and hang out for cannabis. If people want to do it, that's great. I think we have enough. I don't, I have a family to raise, and I don't want this to be that kind of town.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. I think we, let's open this up for public comment here. I know several people I wanted to speak. I think Sue Church is, you were online first, so I will open the floor up to you. As with our typical meetings, you have three minutes for public comment. And just need to unmute yourself and begin speaking. There we go. Welcome, Sue.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Just, yeah, your name and whether or not you're a town resident.
Great. Susan Davis Church is, yeah, I am a town resident. I'm also the Development Director at Teens Inc., and that's the hat I'm wearing tonight, and want to read a letter from our board. The letter states, Dear Netherlands Board of Trustees, Teens Inc. has a 20-plus-year-old mission to support, educate, and empower youth and their families to make healthy choices and thrive. We implement local youth substance abuse prevention activities using communities that care model. In fact, just last week, the board, the BOT, passed a resolution appointing trustee Tanaya, or Tanya, I'm sorry, to the external board, which is our CTC board. We are excited to welcome her in our efforts to reduce risk and promote productive factors commonly associated with underage use or abuse of marijuana and other substances. Please stand with us in an effort to create a healthy environment for our citizens to continue serving the community in this capacity and show that you value the success of Teens Inc. and the youth and families we serve far more than granting another license to yet another marijuana facility in our small town. Please move to approve ordinance number 810, imposing the temporary moratorium as stated in the 81120 emergency meeting action item. With appreciation, Teens Inc. Board of Directors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. I also know John, is it Dyatt, I believe, wanted to speak, so please, John, you're next.
Hi there. Yes, yeah, thanks for a few minutes. Hello, everyone. Appreciate, appreciate a couple minutes just to say a few things on here. I'll be, I'll be brief.
John.
With the Kind Castle.
Yeah, okay. Name and address, name and whether or not town resident. Thank you.
And I am a, I am a resident in town. So just a couple of things I wanted to, wanted to state just briefly. You know, I certainly understand and respect the town's position on putting some kind of limitation on, you know, on marijuana stores. You know, to have none does deprive the town, but to have too many, you know, there has to be some sort of balance, and we would have to be respectful of that. I'm grateful personally. The town's been very good to us, and we want to do the same back to the town for allowing us to operate and granting our license, the Kind Castle in downtown. So we're certainly very grateful for that. We love being part of the community. There's other projects that I have in mind to do in the community outside of the marijuana business. So the marijuana's certainly brought me in the door. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to be involved with some other property development. Just the other day, I called with some, some of my associates about some other developments in town that we can, you know, improve things and bring in some more business activity. So, and so the concern is also on the, the new regulations, I think, are viable, especially with the state. I don't think there's anything that's, that's absent necessarily currently in town that, that, you know, there's a dire need for catching up on from, you know, the new regulations from the state. One of the new businesses has been a hospitality establishment where customers can go and actually consume marijuana, which I understand that's not even something that we want to see everywhere. But I think that there's a need in communities to have that instead of, you know, having people consuming marijuana outdoors in parking lot vehicles, hotel rooms, you know, non-smoking hotel rooms, a lot of that takes place, alleyways. You know, so I think that having that in a regulated environment is beneficial. At first, when I thought of the idea of, you know, consumption lounge, I thought, wow, there's, you know, there's got to be some liabilities involved here. What about, you know, driving under the influence? And to speak to a comment said earlier, I respect that as far as the potency of it. So, because it, you know, marijuana's gotten a lot more potent, you know, over time. And you've got, you know, marijuana getting to the high 30% ranges on THC. Do I really want to promote, you know, cannabis use in that high a fashion, you know, for, for that potency? I don't think that's a great idea, you know, maybe putting a limitation of 20% or, you know, something, something a little bit more reasonable so customers can actually consume. or, you know, something, something a little bit more reasonable so customers can actually consume a certain amount and it won't impair them to that, that extent. So I think that there is, there is need for a little oversight and a revision, especially in a community's new type of establishments. I had recently applied for retail marijuana license at 236 East Fifth Street. And I was hoping to be able to keep that hearing in place for the 18th still of this month, just to allow for limited retail sales and contingent that in the future of, you know, the development of, you know, some sort of consumption lounge.
I think that's the beeping noise we're hearing.
Issues are aggressive.
That's his three minutes. John, that's your three minutes.
Took me a minute to realize that that was the beep.
Here's that noise too. I'm not sure.
If you can just tie it up with one or two sentences.
Sure, sure. So I am able to, you know, it's possible to, to keep in mind if we can't get approved, you know, for addressing a side of, a type of establishment that, you know, to at least get our retail license approved at that site. The overall picture, you know, to freeze that application, to hold on to it, if there's a six-month moratorium that takes place, that while the town does update its, its, its code. But I just wanted to state that I think that it, it would be helpful if I was involved with, you know, providing additional feedback for how those consumption lounges are governed. Because I share those concerns. So.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I see a hand raised here by Allison Bailey. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Allison Bailey. I am not a resident of Netherlands. I'm a resident of Boulder County. And I'm the Program Manager for the Community Substance Abuse Prevention Program at Boulder County Public Health. I'm here to speak in support of the temporary moratorium on the submission acceptance, processing, and approval of any license application for retail and medical marijuana establishments. We at Boulder County Public Health agree that staff need time to investigate, review, and analyze potential new town regulations for marijuana-related businesses, as well as time for opportunities for community engagement. With the changes in state laws that allow for opting in or out of marijuana hospitality establishments, it's important to carefully consider the health and safety implications. A moratorium will allow Netherlands to explore how to protect indoor air, smoke-free and vapor-free environments, reduce exposure to secondhand smoke and vapor, allowing marijuana smoking and vaping in an indoor environment will create a newly unprotected class of workers and may undermine existing smoke and vapor-free protections. It's important to protect youth and help them thrive. Studies on youth marijuana use show that the use of marijuana impacts critical skills for youth like learning, memory, and decision-making. Early research about the impacts of marijuana legalization indicate that youth's early exposure to marijuana advertisements does influence their intention to use marijuana. Learning from research about alcohol, it has been shown that living in areas with a high density of alcohol outlets is associated with a significant increase in the likelihood of adolescents using alcohol at an earlier age. And according to the 2017 Healthy Kids Colorado survey, most Boulder County youth don't regularly use marijuana, a statistic that should not reverse. And finally, it's important to protect public safety. Marijuana impairment negatively affects a person's reaction time, coordination, perception, and memory. As was mentioned earlier around driving, the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment recommends waiting six hours after smoking marijuana and eight hours after using an edible before driving. Boulder County Public Health staff would like to serve as a resource and partner for the Netherlands Board of Trustees by providing data and information on substance use prevention, smoke-free protections, mental health and health equity best practices as you consider any additional licenses for marijuana businesses and decide whether to opt in to marijuana hospitality establishments. We welcome the opportunity to be involved in an ongoing dialogue in supporting the Netherlands Board of Trustees and making decisions that promote opportunities for a healthy life for Netherlands residents. Extending the moratorium on licenses will allow time for these thoughtful decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Would anyone speak? I saw a couple people, I saw somebody come off of mute there, calling user four.
I'm unmuting them for them.
Oh, you unmuted. Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if that person wants to talk. They had some feedback. Someone else who called in.
Or anyone else? Any members of the public like to speak on this? Not hearing anything. We will bring this back to the board. I want to thank everyone from the public who spoke, you know, Allison, John, and, and Sue, thank you for your comments tonight. Board of Trustees, if you have any further thoughts, I, I really want to reiterate or want to reinforce what Jonathan said during his previous, earlier comments about my, my hope, when I brought forward the idea of this ordinance last week, this emergency ordinance is that this time I want us to tackle it differently than we did previously. Previously, we, we talked about, we had some discussions, but we never really focused on it because like Jonathan said, we had a lot of other irons in the fire. So I would very much be in favor of talking about a schedule and would be interested if any trustees would like to take the lead on working with town staff to update the research that has occurred and look at what possibilities there are for the town of Netherlands. This will then come back as an item at a future board meeting and perhaps would require a subcommittee where we could bring in representatives from the community, from Boulder County Health and from the industry, as John volunteered, to come up with some ideas for the town and to look at if, what, if anything, we want to change within the town code. And part of that could be looking at this consumption, I can't remember quite what the official term is, but the, the idea of a onsite consumption recreational facility, club for that use. So I'm gonna just throw this open to the Board of Trustees for any comments on that, thoughts, a plan. Go for it. Julian, I saw you come up of.
Uh, yes, I, I, I was anticipating the possibility that I might accidentally speak and so I pushed the button. I, I would be willing to work with staff to develop wording, develop analysis and then proposed wording for the code.
Well, thank you very much. That's, that's two weeks in a row you volunteered to work on town code. You're going to become our town code expert on this board.
Well, as I've told Karen so many times, nothing is more important than the definitions. Once you've got those, everything else is easy.
Yes, indeed. Tanya?
Can't we just say something, just where it's got a number or we just limit it to five? So if one goes out of business, then there would be an open spot for another.
Yes, that's one of the possible changes to the code that we could look at.
And I think, yeah, I think that's an important consideration. But what has me most interested is code that helps us to guide any new businesses into, in directions that are safe for our citizens and for our visitor. And I think there may be a lot of interesting stuff that may be involved there.
Okay, what are some of those ideas you guys have for that?
I, I'm only now just thinking about it, but I mean, one of the things that comes to mind was precisely what John Diet proposed, which is that we specify limitations on the strength of marijuana for that kind of establishment. What would that strength be? I don't know. There's some research yet to be done.
Gotcha. Kind of like the equivalent of 3.2 beer or something.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd jump in here and, you know, John quoted 20%. I'd take that down to that type of establishment in a town our size, even less than that. You know, let's take it back to where marijuana was in the 90s.
Yeah.
10%, 12% high CBD strains there. If you want to have that type of establishment, usually the ideal of it is for the social aspect. There's many different reasons individuals consume marijuana. And I think that type of establishment is catering more toward the social atmosphere. And in that case, you don't need to be so cooked out of your brain, you can't even form a word. So I think that's a really good idea John brought in. I'm also really interested in the fact he talked about bringing in, you know, professionals in the industry. When we made these laws originally, when Netherlands developed legalized marijuana, I was in college. So I wasn't actually here, but I heard about it the first day because we made the New York Times. So I'd like to also kind of put to the Board of Trustees that if we're looking to, to put this moratorium on because we don't want to be the town where people come to buy weed and hang out, I would hate to say, but it's too late. We're, we're like five years too late on that. What, what I would love to see is us work with the industry and the professionals we have here recognizing the strengths of our community and the strengths of those individuals and the fact that they love this community too. And they don't, they don't want kids down at Teens Inc. smoking weed instead of being in there working and doing all the great programs that Teens Inc. provides. So I would suggest that maybe town staff could read out, reach out to Stacy. I believe he was on, at that time, Joe Gearlocks, Mayors, whatever the technical term was. But it was the group that got together that really looked at this closely and said, hey, if we're going to allow marijuana, here's our regulations, here's our limitations, here's the things we want to avoid. And now that we're, what, almost eight, six, six, eight years into this, back of pocket, just pulling years out of my head, that we bring those folks back in and say, here was our original ideas. Here are the things we tried to avoid and here's where we're at now. Let's go back, let's update this. So I think reaching out to the industry professional is a really good idea. Thank you, Julian, for stepping in. But one thing I really kind of want to push is we can't just use legislation in this town to try to guide businesses the way that we want them. We have to also provide opportunities for other type of businesses. I think, I'll say personally, I don't think it's any surprise Happy Trails was breaking down at a time that the festival community seemed to be going head-to-head with the mountain bike community over a pump track. And that was some unfortunate things that happened, but we think we learned a lot as a community about communicating more closely and trying to work together. And I'll really tip my hat off to Jesse on Prostab for really, really turning Prostab into a well-respected and well-listened to, you know, advisory board in this community. And I know that there's things going around like that. So I guess what I would just want to put my two cents in there is we need to look at this moratorium as putting the brakes on because we're recognizing that there's problems, calling back the individuals that are originally a part of and willing to help with this and committing to a schedule tonight, I would say, of getting, really getting this done. And I would like to say on the four-month schedule, if we're going to enact a six-month moratorium or as a board, if we're not confident that we can get this work done, then we enact a year moratorium and we just do not allow any more applications or any potential interested businesses to put their time and effort into coming to this town until we've really decided what we want as a town for the marijuana industry.
That makes sense. I just want to add something about the putting the limits on what they can sell. I think that's a great idea, but I think, and I think that we should totally do that of the strength. But I can be about a, really quite sure that people are going to be bringing in different strains and doing a little sharing and show and telling of different things that they're growing themselves. And even though they're probably not supposed to be bringing it into the store, I'm pretty sure it can happen, it will happen. It's like you go to a state park and they say only 3.2 beer, but you bring in whatever, you know, you just put it in a different. I was saying, it's a little naive to think it's really going to change. It's going to, but it's a good, it should be on paper, but I don't think it's going to actually be reality. Because I don't think anybody smokes that weed anymore. Look, I don't, I don't even know if they can make it anymore. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, Tanya. Yeah, I agree with Jonathan. I don't think this is something that needs to drag out for six-plus months. I think this is, we've, a lot, the town, town staff has done a lot of the base research on this. It's in the aim and they have more material from meetings last year. So I think we are, have a leg up, do something in the three-to-four-month timeframe. And I would really, again, also thank Julian for stepping forward. I'd love to see, we have our board meeting coming up, our regular scheduled board meeting next week. And I'd love to have Julian and town staff maybe put forth a, propose a timeline for when we would bring this as a discussion item to the Board of Trustees so we can begin looking at the modifications to the town, the specific modifications to the town code that we're not ready to make tonight within the next, you know, month or two.
This is Julian. I'd ask the town staff email me whatever data we have on this now so that I can start thinking through suggestions and proposals and then discuss that with staff from a much better standpoint of knowledge. I'd also want to emphasize that law does not prevent crime. What law does is establish a norm. That norm is important whether people follow it or not. And I understand that people will not be following the norm, but I think the most important job that law plays is establishing what that community sees as normal and proper. And we can use that to change behavior as well.
Other comments from the Board of Trustees? If not, we'd also be looking for a potential motion regarding ordinance 810.
This is Julian. I move to approve ordinance number 810, imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any license applications for all retail marijuana and medical marijuana establishments in emergency and providing an immediate effective date.
Second.
That was trustee Coomsy's mail with the second. Thank you, gentlemen. Miranda?
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Ordinance 810 passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to those who, the members of public who spoke, town staff, incredible Miranda, really. I hope you will continue to work with John to work out what, what his next steps are.
And we'll call up Julian on the items he's looking for as well as the proposal for the timeframe of bringing this back.
Magnificent. Thank you, guys, all very much. Anyone have, I think we actually still had, don't have other business. I was gonna say it would be odd if we did, but thank you, yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you, Julian, for volunteering. Thank you, town staff, for preparing this and town attorney Jennifer for presenting it and directing the ordinance for us. Looking for him. Do you have something, Miranda?
No, I was ready to call roll for your adjournment.
Oh, okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I, I would like to ask a quick question of Allison Bailey, if I may. Allison, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, you're representing, I'm, I may have misremembered. Whoever is representing Boulder Public Health, was that?
Yeah, that was Allison. Yes.
Allison. Allison, would you be willing to participate in reviewing what we're proposing here?
Yes, absolutely. Would love to be a part of any working group or anything, any way we can help you.
Very fine. Then I move to adjourn.
Well, really quick, before we do that, I don't have your contact information, Allison. So could you, I'm gonna reopen the chat function and then.
Miranda, I think, I think I've got it. She emailed all of us. I think she emailed the Board of Trustees. So we've got it.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer. Trustee Corvallin. Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys, all very much. And we will, we'll, we'll be back on this WebEx in one week time, but hopefully talk to you all before then. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.